Elder persons are present except for Elder Person Ryan Austin, who is excused. Our first item of business is presentation of colors by the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department Honor Guard.
Detail. Order. Forward. Mark. See?
Our next item of business is administration of ceremonial oath of office and badge pinning for the new Wisconsin Rapids Police Chief. Daniel, please come forward.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Daniel J. Hostens.
I, Daniel J. Hostens.
Having been duly selected.
Having been duly selected.
To serve as chief.
To serve as chief.
Of the Police Department.
Of the Police Department.
For the City of Wisconsin Rapids.
For the City of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Wisconsin.
And of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
And as I always say, this is your opportunity to sneak out. So we'll give you a moment unless you're really interested. Chief will have plenty going forward. All right. We're on to reading of the minutes of the previous meetings held on April 13th and April 19th. See attachment one and two. What are your wishes? We have a motion by Veneman, second by Katna. Any further discussion, question? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's, zero N's. Item seven is consider for confirmation Mayor Blazer's appointments to various committees, commissions, and boards. See attachment three. These are all reappointments to the committees that they're already on. I'm sorry, we have a motion by Bemke, seconded by Pollock. Any further questions? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. And that motion carried seven A's, zero N's. We're on to item eight is a presentation on the Guardian Angel Project. Chief Ekis and Elder Person Delaney have been working on this.
Otherwise, they won't hear you on home.
So while Tyler's pulling that up, Councilmember Patrick Delaney had gotten ahold of me probably six months ago and asked about, can we do something for the people in the city that are like shut-ins or rely on oxygen or oxygen generators? Or we have people in the city that rely on actually ventilators? And what do we, what happens with them when we have large-scale events such as power outages? Something like the wind outage we had a couple of years ago. So I've been working with Patrick on this and this is just going to be a short overview. This is really put together more for presenting to the people that we're going to be asking to help with this. It's no money. I don't think that the city's going to have to involve in it. It's going to be completely 100% volunteer. But it's going to address some issues because during these big events, obviously, police and fire and EMS are very busy. And to just go and check on people takes a lot away from, you know, the 911 service that we should be supplying, so. Oh. I suppose I can't see that up here, huh? Nope. So it's, we named it the Guardian Angel Project and like it says up there, it's neighbors helping neighbors. I haven't had a chance to really review this a lot. So electrical outages, you know, big events, windy vents, anything that would take power away or would have, would, you know, allow somebody that's having, that is shut in to have an event like that. So if you want to go to the next one. And who's, who are we, you know, identifying here as affected population is people with durable medical devices such as the oxygen, the ventilators and such. It may be just a shut-in population that can't get out of the house, elderly, you know, bed confined, people like that. So I've been speaking with the emergency management, not emergency management, Wood County Health, and they try to do some stuff with this, but they never really get to the whole affected population during events like this, so. So I just talked about this. This is why we're doing it is obviously we're busy. So emergency government is busy during these times. They're trying to set up, you know, emergency power and things like that. And Wood County Health, again, very busy because of what's going on in the area. So you can go to the next one if you want, please. So here's our idea, our solution. Advertise this. I've already been in contact with Wood County Health. They do have lists of all the people that have these durable medical devices. Now, we can't just force ourselves upon them, but it gives us an avenue to be able to contact them and say, would you like to be on this list? Once we develop that list, we can then identify locations throughout the city that these, these citizens are in and then try to target organizations in those areas, churches, Lions Clubs, the Rotary Club, any, any of the volunteer organizations, and get volunteers that would not have to get called and say, can you go check on these? They know that during a wind event or power outages, they would have that one or two people assigned to them that they would go and check on them. If there's problems, they'll, they'll call 911 or call us, like if there's somebody that they just can't help. A lot of times it's just if somebody's there, you, you kind of ease anxiety of these patients, or these people. And just the idea of somebody who's there helping can really, you know, help that situation. So once we identify those people, we'd have to do a background check on them. Obviously, we don't want to be sending people there that don't belong, you know, in somebody else's home. So we do background checks on them, but I don't think in the organizations that we're looking at, we would have a problem. Focus especially if there's people in these organizations that have some, like an emergency medical responder or nurses and things like that that could really play big roles in, in these events and, and those times, so. Next one, please. And then we picked the geographical locations we were talking about. We already talked about some of those. I've already been in contact with a couple of churches just to try to feel the idea of who would want to get involved. There's a rather large church in the city that told me they got 15 or 20 people already ready to get involved. If you look at like high school kids, they're always looking for volunteer organizations because it looks good on their college resumes. And when you, if you think about like CCHI program, the Central Cities Health Institute, that fits very well into what they're going to, into their careers that they're, they're trying to focus on, it would fit very well with some of them helping out also. So I think we got plenty of opportunity for volunteers for this. Next one, please. So besides that list, we would probably advertise maybe on the city website, on like Fire Department Facebook page. I'm sure we could get it on the Police Department's Facebook page and then have applications for them to fill out. That would give us the, the confirmation they want us to help, but we could also find out what kind of problems they got. What kind of medical devices do they have? Do they have a vent? Do they have oxygen? Maybe how many tanks do they keep on site in the event that the, the generators aren't going to be able to work because of the power outages? So it's just another avenue. And then we'd have that database that would, we would update once a year to make sure that those people are still in want of that use or are there new people that would fall into that category? Long events, you know, they would be checking on them, but during long events, it may be they would check on them, you know, once a day or once every six hours or 12 hours or whatever that event would be, so. Next slide, please. The, the good outcome about this is a faster response. They don't, they aren't waiting till they're in trouble. So they're, they've been without oxygen, now their O2 saturations are low, and now they're in trouble. And long-term effects of it can be greatly reduced by somebody being there. And just the idea I said earlier about easing anxiety can really help in a lot of these situations, so. And I think the last one is any questions? Yep. We just wanted to, I guess, let you know what's going on with this. If you got questions, we'd be more than happy to answer, but I think we'll, our next move is going to be to, to try to find organizations that, I got lists coming from emergency or Wood County Health on people in the city that actually have some of these devices. And then get the applications on city website and, and Facebook pages and things like that and get the word out there, so. Any questions?
Thank you, Todd. Mr. Delaney, do you have anything?
I just want to say thanks to Chief Ekis, who I just had the idea and he actually came up with all this stuff. He named it. He's, he put together the, everything and it was just an idea and he really took it and ran with it, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Item nine is consider resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed 1 point, 1,230,000 dollars. General obligation promissory note series 2023A, see attachment four. Bill's already at the podium. Yep, is the green light on the bottom?
It was not on. I'm just loud, I guess.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. So two of the things that we really want to kind of stress as we've kind of walked through this, and we've been going through this multi-year plan with staff over a number of years, is that we want to try to structure the existing obligation and the new issues. So we don't see peaks and valleys in the tax rate for debt. And so that's the debt levy when it comes to budget time. So every year you go through your budget process, there's a debt levy that is out there. And our goal always, working with staff again, is to structure the debt so we don't have any peaks and valleys. We don't in this case. We expect that the debt levy, we should be able to keep it relatively flat going forward with this issue included. Second, we're always mindful of the, kind of the overall borrowing capacity of the community as we, as we R-rated and, and we have to go through that rating process with Moody's. We want to make sure that we hit all these different parameters that they look at. So Moody's looks at about 15 or so different criteria when, when determining what the rating's going to be for a community. One of those is the amount of outstanding debt. Another related to debt is how quickly are you paying the debt back? That's one thing that you have going for you for sure. That is you've been very aggressive in your repayment of your existing obligation. So instead of stretching the debt over 15 or 20 years, which you certainly could do, you have tended to borrow money over a short period of time, pay it off relatively quick to mitigate some of the, the impact long-term and the amount of interest that is being paid. So you're at about 40% of your borrowing capacity even with this issue. You were at 42% last year. So you are paying down debt faster than this is coming out. So you're going to pay off about 2.6 million in principal and you're going to take on, if you do this issue, 1.2 million in, in new debt. So the debt profile is actually coming down a little bit. So that will all be part of that rating process that I indicated. So tonight, we're looking again for authorization to proceed with the financing of those three road projects that would be undertaken yet this year.
Questions? Go ahead, Jake.
Thank you. This, could you go over what the outlook might be for municipal bonds and our interest rates going forward? Is the yield of the treasury bills are so high right now, how is that going to reflect going forward? If we want to continue to take out debt every year and where we're going to fall in interest rate there?
Sure, certainly. This is a very busy time of year for us. We are, we have multiple communities that are issuing bonds or notes weekly, you know, just construction season. So this tends to be a very busy time of year. We do have a three-year bond chart in here that kind of gives you a snapshot over the last three years. And it's not real telling, only in that we're in such a low-rate environment for so many years. We had the, kind of what I'll call a bubble downward with interest rates for, for an extended time. We've seen them increase. We don't tend to see a lot of movement in summer of interest rates, even if the Fed would make, decide to make another move. That's a short-term rate. We're looking at a 10-year note here. Our, my projection right now, just based on what we've seen sell this week, we had a bond issued today for another community, would be somewhere around 3.25% ballpark, maybe 3.5% at the high end in today's market. It's a relatively small issue, a million, I know it sounds like a lot of money, but in the municipal bond market, it's a relatively small issue. Your rating is strong. I don't anticipate any struggles with your rating to retain the rating, but we think you'd be in that 3.25%, 3.5% range.
Thank you.
Any other question? Patrick.
You mentioned last year we were at 42%. According to the Department of Revenue, 2021, we were at 48.77%. Did it drop 6%, almost 7% in one year?
There's two factors that really play into it. One is the amount of outstanding principal you have. That's how they determine that. Principal on, on general obligation debt, not revenue debt, so just general obligation debt. And then the second is, you know, the equalized value of the community. So just the overall value of the community. So currently, because we just prepared this, you're at 42%. And how we got there is your outstanding principal in 2022 was 28.2 million. Your total value of the community is 1,358, 1 billion 300, 1 billion 358,225,200. Sorry, that's a big number to come up with all the zeros. Your debt limit is 67.9, so it's 5% of the borrowing capacity. And that puts you at 40%, 42% of your borrowing capacity. So it's always a bit of a moving target in that when you get the new valuation numbers come out, they come out every April, I'm sorry, August 1st by the Department of Revenue. And then when you're looking actually at the amount of outstanding principal, again, you're paying off principal throughout the year, so that could be the factors. Timing.
Just to add that, in 2021, our outstanding debt was 29,651,000. If you remember, and that, that contained the, the $2,350,000 in known anticipation notes. And if you remember, we, we had the donations, we've reduced the refinancing that by 500,000 plus then we used 750,000 of our reserves. So our debt dropped between 2021 and what we're projecting at the end of 2023, 2.7 million dollars, which is going to lower that, our debt margin to about 39.6%, but that'll move a little bit once we get the new equalized number this fall.
I had sent out an email to everybody and I hope that you read it about municipal debt. Wisconsin Rapids is in the top 5% for total debt. And carrying debt is not a, it's not a common thing for municipalities to do. Two-thirds of Wisconsin, over two-thirds of Wisconsin municipalities carry less than 10% debt and over a third carries 0% debt, so. I'd hope we could do better on, during finance time of the year so we can get a better balanced budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zach.
I, I agree with you, Mr. Delaney. And last year was a learning year. This year, hopefully, we can learn even more and do better. Can you, you said debt levy. Can you explain that? I didn't understand that.
Sure. So every year, there is a general obligation debt that is against the, that's essentially levied against all the property taxpayers in, in the city. And so that's, that is called the debt levy. So you have an operating levy, which operations of the city, police, fire, library, parks, that's the operating levy. Then you'll have a debt levy, which is the outstanding general obligation debt that is due in an annual year. So that makes up really the levy. There might be some other small pieces to it, but those are the two main ones, the debt levy and the operating levy. So it's, it fluctuates every year. Our goal in working with staff is so it doesn't have a roller coaster effect. So that we don't have one year, it's a big spike up in the debt levy and it drops. And, you know, that's tough to manage when it comes to tax bill time. So our goal always is to try to keep that debt levy flat so that, that's one less variable when you come to the budget time that you're dealing with.
Just curious, so you're saying it's your goal or our, like, all of our goal?
Well, staff, working with staff, they don't want to see a big spike in, in the tax rate in any year. So that's, that's part of what we work on directly with staff to make sure that we don't see those peaks and valleys.
Okay, so am I understanding that it's too sep, is, is it just, are we just using definitions? Or is it actually two different sections to the levy? Is it?
Well, yeah, I mean, well, it's all comes into the tax levy. But the amount that you levy for the payment of debt is called the debt service tax levy. And that's the one that's, you know, is exempted from levy limits. So whatever that is, is exempted out of those levy limits. The rest of it would be your, your operational levy or, you know, for all your other capital and operating needs.
Okay, so that's, I think that's, so what I'm hearing then is there's levy limits for operational, certain categories that fit into that, but then the debt levy is completely outside of the levy limits in terms of we can do what we want with it?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Just to kind of, and, you know, I, I read your email, Elder Person Delaney, and just kind of looking into it and I just kind of want to point out some things is that, you know, that also includes all municipalities within the state of Wisconsin, which is roughly over 1,900, you know. And a lot, and that includes a lot of the townships and some of them are very small. In fact, 958 of them are below a population of 1,000. Other 368 are below a population of 500. When you look at Wisconsin Rapids, we When you look at Wisconsin Rapids, we rank about forty-six, we're forty-six, we're in the two and a half percent of population. And when you look at our debt per capita, we rank 119. So, you know, when you look at our comparables, you know, it makes sense that, you know, your larger municipalities have a lot of infrastructure that they have to replace and provide facilities and things. Obviously, you know, the debt, I think we're ranked, you know, when you look at debt level, we're like sixty-six. So I'd just like to point that out. And also, you know, when you look at our debt, you know, at the end of 2023, assuming this is approved tonight, it'd be about 26.8 million dollars. And, you know, when I kind of put some stuff together at budget time, and then I reissued it today, it's like, you know, on an annual basis, we do borrow for our street construction projects. But when you really look at our debt profile portfolio, only thirty-one percent is dedicated to street construction, that, that annual borrowing for. What's driving, what drove the debt up is some of our larger products, like the aquatic center, East River Bank Trail, fire station renovation, and things like that. So what we're borrowing on a annual basis for street construction isn't driving our debt upwards. In fact, if you project out our debt, and if we borrowed 1,650,000 dollars each annual, each year for street construction and borrowed for nothing else, over the next 10 years, our debt will drop from 28,235 in '22 to approximately thirteen, thirteen,135,000 in 2023. So, you know, I just want to, you know, just reiterate that the amount that we borrow annually for streets isn't what's driving our debt upwards.
Do you want to make a motion? Motion for, to approve the resolution? Okay, thank you. We have a motion to approve the resolution. Mr. Zach.
Just another quick question. Did you want a clarification on summers? Did you say summer's a busy time and the, and the rates are higher during that time?
No, we've actually seen over the last two months, rates drop. We were, over the last, well, actually about two and a half months now, we've seen a slight drop in interest rates. I think the Fed now acting to kind of stabilize has helped stabilize the market as well. And so, no, we, we actually are thinking this is, again, I don't think summer typically, there's a lot of movement in interest rates. We tended to see that be a relatively flat time period. Where we do see rates jump up a lot of times is late in the season, late fall into early winter. There's a lot of demand in the market around that time as well. But, you know, we've seen a little bit of a recovery in rates over the last two and a half months.
So this is, I guess, an overall question, and you can answer it, or you don't have to necessarily. But is this the time when there's a massive influx in, if, like, we're just one state right out of fifty? Is there a time when this is happening across the board that is just?
No, I think Wisconsin and the Upper Midwest tends to issue more in this time of year for obvious reasons, right? Construction season is around the corner or is here. Trust me, I drive around a lot, it's here. And so there's, there's a lot of demand, but that's different in all different segments of the market. And we don't just receive bids on our, on bonds from Wisconsin or Upper Midwest firms. It can be national as well. So they're all looking at, at the creditworthiness of the community to determine whether or not they want to bid on bonds, what their appetite is for their investors, et cetera.
Thank you. So we have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second by Bemke. Is there any further questions, discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried six a's, one nay. Thank you, Phil.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we are on item 10, which is 23-000125, City of Wisconsin Rapids. Action on a request to amend Chapter 11 zoning ordinance, specifically Appendix A land use matrix to list single-family dwelling as a permitted or conditional use in R3 multifamily medium-density residential district. See attachment number five. And Mr. Kearns is here to help explain it.
Thank you. I have to apologize, this item was in front of the Plan Commission in April, and it was, the ordinance was not included in the April council packet. So it is before you now for action. And the Plan Commission recommended to approve a single-family use within the R3 district as a permitted use. So you'll notice the agenda item says permitted or conditional. Know that Plan Commission recommended as a permitted use, and that is how the ordinance has been drafted and is indicated on attachment five. I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have in regards to the request. Thank you.
Any questions? Oh, sorry. Mr. Catnau.
Thank you. Kyle, can you brief me on what prompted this? What the need for an amendment to the ordinance?
Yeah, typically in, in our community, the R3 district falls within a transitional zone. So it'll be on the border of, you know, the downtown or single-family uses. And then you'll have R3, and then you'll have commercial. Again, it's that transitional district that allows for our medium-density multifamily. Right now, because it's in that transitional district, we don't allow single-family uses. So a lot of, a lot of R3 property actually has current single-family uses within those districts, and they're considered non-conforming uses. So they can't expand, they can't even operate. Like, if they've been vacant for a year, they can't be reestablished into a single-family use. We've had a couple of contractors look to renovate some of these homes and restore them back to single-family, and they've been unable to do so because of the single-family and being non-conforming or not permitted within that district. So from a zoning standpoint, typically in other communities, you'll find that single-family uses, because they're less intense, usually carry through all of the residential districts. But for some reason, our code does not permit them beyond the R2 district. So I think it generally falls in line with other communities. I think it's a good thing for Wisconsin Rapids in that single-family can start to operate in some of these dense areas of the city. And we can hopefully see some of these homes convert back to single-family.
And right now, you mentioned some of them were vacant, looking to be renovated by contractors?
Correct. One that comes to mind is behind the school offices, behind Witter Park. There's a very large, old historic building over there, and it was historically a rooming house. And the code permits that use, but it does not allow single-family. Well, a contractor purchased it with the intent to do a rooming house, but since it's found a buyer for a single-family use, a couple that wants to invest into the building and again restore it to its historic character. But the code prohibits them from doing that.
Thank you. Motion approved.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Catnau, second by Mr. Veneman. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven a's, zero nays. Item 11 is considered for the adoption in the action of the Planning Commission at its meeting held on May 1st. Mr. Kearns.
Thank you, Mayor. The Plan Commission met at 4:00 PM on May 1st. There were a quorum of members present. We also have a list of other individuals present in our office and the clerk's office. Meeting was called to order at 4:00 PM. There was a, the first item was approval of the report from April 3rd. There was a motion by Daven to approve that report, second by Tao. That motion carried six zero. Item two was a request from David Zilke in a public hearing in action for a conditional use permit amendment for site reconfiguration to a previously approved conditional use to establish an auto repair facility at 2248th Street South. Parcel ID is identified. Staff provided a summary. The public hearing opened at 4:06 PM. Speaking in favor, Lee Dewitt of 2241 Sixth Street. Speaking against, none. That public hearing closed at 4:08 PM. There were a few questions amongst the commission which staff answered. Then there was a motion by Austin to approve the request, subject to the following conditions. There are seven of them outlined in the staff report. There was a second by Blazer. That motion carried six zero. Item number three was a request by me and Development for architectural review for an industrial building addition at 2211 Industrial Street. Again, staff provided a synopsis of the request. There was a motion by Austin to approve the request, subject to six conditions outlined in the staff report. There was a second by Daven, that motion carried six zero. Item four was a request from Jonathan Ruder for a sign exception for an off-premise sign at 2738th Street South. Again, staff provided a summary. There was a motion by Daven to approve the request for the sign exception, subject to one condition that's identified in the staff report. There was a second by Maroots, that motion carried six zero. Item five was a request by the City of Wisconsin Rapids for public hearing in action to amend Chapter 11, specifically Section 11.06.67, parent C, parking of a commercial vehicle as an ancillary residential use to allow for greater flexibility and standards for commercial vehicles. Staff provided a summary. The public hearing opened at 4:25 PM. Speaking in favor, none. Speaking against, Emily Kent at 231 Fifth Street North. The public hearing closed at 4:28 PM. Again, there were some questions that staff answered from the commission. And there was a motion by Austin to approve the request, second by Maroots. That motion carried six zero. Item six was adjournment, motion by Daven to adjourn, second by Kubashak. That motion carried, I've got to add that, motion carried six zero. Meeting adjourned at 4:35 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zach.
I'd like to recognize Lee Albright to speak.
Lee, if you can make sure the microphone's on.
Thank you, Councilman Zach. My name's Lee Albright, I live at 443 Mead Circle. And I'd have, I'm in favor of the last article that Kyle presented about the parking changes for commercial vehicles. I just have a couple of questions. And the question would be, are this nuisance ordinance still going to be enforced? For example, where I live, I'm going to say five, six years ago, there was a semi parked there, and he had it running all night for basically the whole winter. To me, that's a nuisance, and it should be enforced. And the second thing, are the, are these vehicles going to be allowed to park on the street every other night like residential vehicles are? Are they, are they going to have to remain in the driveway? Those are my questions. So, thank you.
Mr. Kearns, do you? Can you? Thank you.
Sure, I can address those. So the enforcement had not been done primarily because there was a contradicting section of statute. So under the municipal code, Chapter 27, Parking Section 27.13, semi trucks were actually permitted to park in residential driveways. However, our zoning code, when it was rewritten in 2018, did not permit semi trucks, just the tractors, to park in driveways. So we had two conflicting ordinances. We've also had a lot of feedback from truckers that have called our office looking for a place to park. And I think, you know, right now, we permit a commercial vehicle, one commercial vehicle, a box-type truck, to be parked in a residential neighborhood or on a residential hard surface. And I think a tractor-trailer is very similar to a box truck, as long as it's not running all night, again, parked on hard surface. So what the zoning code amendment does is create consistency with Chapter 27. I think once we have consistency, the intent is to start enforcing the code. And if we receive complaints about tractors running all night or somebody living in their tractor cab, we would go out and we would inspect and follow up with a, an ordinance violation. To answer your question about parking on the street, I believe under that same section of Chapter 27, vehicles are prohibited from parking in the street overnight. Just trying to confirm here. Yeah, on-street parking is prohibited, municipal code number 823. So if, if there was a, again, a complaint of on-street parking in the street, typically the police department will follow up with those complaints rather than the code enforcement office. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Delaney.
I'd like to hold out number five, please.
Everyone good with that? Okay. And Mr. Catnau? Sounds good. And Mr. Ray.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, before I do, I'd-
Just go ahead, and then if somebody will recognize Bruce after, after Mr. Ray gets done, unless you want to let him, him go first. Up to you. Go ahead.
I'll recognize Bruce, he can go first.
Okay.
Thank you. My, my name is Bruce King, and my address is 11120th Place. I too am not opposed to this ordinance, but I do have a safety concern. If you take a panel truck or a semi, and they're allowed to park in their driveway, and they park maybe a couple feet back from city right-of-way, my concern is the neighbor next door, which could be as close as 15, 20 feet in his driveway, how are they going to be able to safely back out? I think there should be a setback saying they can't be any closer than 15 feet to the city right-of-way. Because if you have a semi or a panel truck, they're going to be right there. The neighbor next door isn't going to be able to see to back out properly, not only for automobiles, but I really am concerned about the safety of children on bicycles and walkways. Because anybody who backs out of their driveway knows that if there's a vehicle in the way, you're not going to be able to see them. So my concern be is that you could possibly add to the ordinance that they couldn't park no other, more than, say, 15 feet close to the right-of-way. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Go ahead.
Thank you. Item two. Yes, that's the new auto repair on Eighth Street. Concern I have, I guess, is in there, it has, and I guess I agree with the seven items, I think, but just such as number three, that'd be overnight vehicles must be screened from the public view, where that, I, I agree with that, but we also, we have businesses in town that, for whatever reason, and I'm not going to say how many, because I don't know, just a couple come to mind now immediately that with cars that are parked, or vehicles that are parked outside in their front. And I, I guess, probably when they were approved with that, maybe that was that. But I guess would the intent be that as we go forward, that this would be something that we'd look at, have it, that there'd be screening vehicles that be parked out there overnight? I guess that's to start with there. I know this doesn't take in those that are already there, but the screening of it sure makes it, would make it better. And so I hope that that does stay part of it, and they follow that. Just, I guess, a comment I wanted to make, because I know we, there are a few in town that don't have that, don't have that restriction. That's all.
Thank you. So we've held out item five. What are your wishes on the balance of the report? So we have a motion by Zach, or is that to approve the balance of the report? And second by Mr. Catnau? Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven a's, zero nays. Mr. Delaney, regarding item five?
My reason for holding this out was since I went to this meeting- since I went to this meeting, I have thought of other smaller home-based businesses that might have more than one pickup truck, such as snow plowing, small delivery service, or lawn mowing, landscaping. And they're all commercial uses. And I think that we should take out pickup truck from limiting it to one per resident.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I guess my questions are less on the proposal of the amendment and more to the enforcement once, or if the amendment gets in place. Specifically, prohibited street parking for these vehicles from ten P M. to six A M. I believe there's been a steady complaint regarding this ordinance. And I'm just wondering if you could detail to me how a resident would go about filing a complaint correctly and to get it taken care of if, if it's a consistent problem. Is that the non-emergency number?
Yeah, again, as I noted earlier, the, the statute in Chapter twenty-seven regarding street part, or the parking of semi-tractors on-street is prohibited. Typically, our zoning ordinance does not enforce the right-of-way. Again, that would be the police department that would enforce that. I think if we received complaints that we would not enforce, we would pass them on to the police department. If there's a semi truck trailer that's parked overnight on private property, that's not on a hard surface, or that's running all night, or that's in front of the residence, we could then obviously follow up with an ordinance violation. They would have to correct that if they fail to correct it. We could issue a citation and, and continue on with issuing citations daily.
Thank you.
Maybe Mr. Pataki might have something you want to add, or?
If there's any concerns with parking, all they have to do is call our non-emergency number, tell us what location it's at, a vehicle, any information like that that they give us, and then we can issue an overnight parking ticket.
Okay. Thank you.
That would be the best route for that.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if there's any holdup because of the contradicting language in the ordinance, if this will be something that will be enforced more, the on-street parking for these vehicles compared to how it was, or if it's just going to be standard practice to still call non-emergency and?
Yeah, it would be standard practice. And our officers do, as long as they have time available, they do go through the streets and anything that's parked on the wrong side of the road, they're going to issue a ticket.
All right, thank you.
I got one quick question. So, if I owned two F-150 pickup trucks that had a plow on it, and it had Mayor Blazer's plowing service, would I be in violation of the ordinance in that case?
While it says pickup truck, I, I, I think, you know, you could probably make a case that one of them is also your personal vehicle. I think what this is trying to prevent is, from a contractor like that, to park all of his, right? If I own a landscape business and I've got a three fifty dump, and I've got another vehicle, and I've got a trailer, and I've got a skid steer, right? We don't want to see that the commercial operations of their business occur on-site. Now, I think there's some flexibility in that, right? You could potentially claim one of them as your personal vehicle that happens to also be used as your business. And I think I would grant that flexibility with the second vehicle being strictly for business purposes. And I think we'd, we've handled them like that on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, I think I might agree with Patrick, because that'd be my concern if I have a couple pickup trucks. You know, obviously, a big three fifty dump, dump truck, and some of the skidsters and some of those things. But if I happen to own, you know, a couple of pickup trucks, that would concern me also. Sorry, Mr. Catna.
Yeah, I just got a question from Matt. So, the example given, and it was an example, but the plow truck services. So, there's a weight capacity on these vehicles already in the ordinance, correct? So, are we talk, is that, is there a weight limit on these? Is that what?
Not, not within zoning, no, on our local roads.
Okay.
I believe. I think that'd be a question for engineering, perhaps, in terms of like, where our truck routes are? Is that where you're?
No, I, I was wondering if the parking in the driveway was restricted by weight. So, I'm picturing in my head, are we talking two or three five-ton vehicles or an F-150? I guess that would be the difference, is an F-150 with a plow wouldn't obviously be as, take up as much space as a larger vehicle. So, there is no weight restriction that?
Not on, not in the zoning code on private property.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Delaney, what's your motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment to Chapter eleven, Section eleven point oh six point six seven C, removing the language of pickup truck.
And is that yours? You second that? Mr. Rayle.
Thank you, Your Honor, just a second here. Almost forgot what I, Bruce raised a good point when he came up to speak, and that was the safety issue of how, you know, a large truck parking towards the back of their driveway or something, for people being able to see around yet. I think that's something that should be looked at, to take that into consideration. Overall, I'm not necessarily in favor of this myself anyway, but I think we should look at safety of that, of a large vehicle that'd be parked, like I said, towards the end of their driveway or whatever, and people backing out, the neighbor backing out, or kids walking by, or not just kids, but adults. And also, the, these would have, these would have to be parked on paved, paved surfaces. So, so not granite in that. It'd have to be paved. That's all.
Yeah, I think also in the ordinance, so you have to be parked, it's illegal to park overhang in the sidewalk. So, you know, at least you have to be that far forward into your driveway, so you're not even that sidewalk portion in your driveway that, even if you don't have sidewalk. Is there any other questions or comments? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. That's correct. Yeah, on his motion to approve the ordinance without the language of pickup trucks in the ordinance. That motion carried five A's, one nay, and one abstention. We are on to item twelve, which is considered for adoption. The action of the standing committees of the common council as follows. A finance and property committee meeting held on May second, two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Zachar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Finance Property Committee meeting at four P M. Tuesday, March second, two thousand twenty-three. All members of the Finance Property Committee were present. Item one, call the orders. Chairperson Zachar called the meeting to order at four oh seven P M. Item two, consider request from Johnny's Bar, established nineteen sixty LLC, doing business as Johnny's Bar. Jonathan Ruder, agent for a retail Class B fermented malt beverages license and retail Class B intoxicating liquor license for the premises located at twenty-six ten A Street South. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Zachar to approve this motion. The motion carried three to zero. Item three, consider for approval, a temporary retail Class B fermented malt beverage license for Central Wisconsin Cultural Center, Inc., at twenty-six fifty-one A Street South for an exhibit opening, Celebrate Red event, to be held on Thursday, May eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, from five thirty P M. to seven thirty P M. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Veneman to approve this motion. Motion carried three to zero. Item four, consider request from Wisconsin Rapids Ranger Baseball, Inc., Tina Bush, agent for a six-month retail Class B fermented malted beverages license from May to October, two thousand twenty-three, for the premises located at the Rapids Area Sports Complex at eighteen oh one Sixteenth Street South. It was moved by Zachar, seconded by Veneman to approve this motion. Motion carried three to zero. Item five, consider request from Wisconsin Rapids Women's Softball Association, Jamie McDonald, agent for a six-month retail Class B fermented malted beverages license from May to October, two thousand twenty-three, for the premises located at Mead Field at three one one Seventeenth Avenue South for the women's concession stand and seasonal softball diamond area, and a temporary premises extension to include the men's concession stand and seasonal softball diamond area for a softball tournament from May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, to May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. It was moved by Veneman and seconded by Bemke to approve this motion. Motion carried three to zero. Item six, initial review of alcohol license renewals. The alcohol license renewals were reviewed. No action was taken. Item seven, discussion and possible action on amending policy guidelines for the Rapids Rediscovered Grant Program. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Veneman to amend policy guidelines for the Rapids Rediscovery Grant Program as presented. Motion carried three to zero. Item eight, discussion and possible action on contracting building plan review services with E-Plan Exam for the Inspection Division of the Community Development Department. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Veneman to con, contract building plan review services with E-Plan Exam for the Inspection Division of the Community Development Department. Motion carried three to zero. Item nine, review and consider for approval of twenty-twenty-three budget amendment number one. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Zachar to approve budget amendment number one. Motion carried three to zero. Item ten, out of the bills. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Zachar to approve check numbers one six six eight zero to one six nine six seven. Motion carried three to zero. Item eleven, next, next meeting date, the next regular committee meeting is set for Tuesday, June sixth, two thousand twenty-three, at four P M. Item twelve, adjournment, it was moved by Zachar, seconded by Bemke to adjourn. Motion carried three to zero. The meeting adjourned at four forty P M. With that, I submit the notes for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Zachar. Uh, Mr. Delaney?
I would just like to hold out eight once it gets a motion to?
Okay. Can you hit your motion button, then, Mr. Zachar? Yeah, I, I, oh, I thought you did, I'm sorry. Do you want to make that motion? Okay. So, we have a motion, Mr. Delaney wants to hold out item eight, if everybody's good with that. And we have a motion, is there a second? And we have a second by Mr. Bemke. So, the motion to approve the report, holding out item with, withholding out item eight. Is there any further discussion on the balance? Uh, Mr. Rayle?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I was going to just make a comment to number eight, we'll wait till we get there, but number three is recurring one that we have of, and I don't believe it was talked about at the meeting or not, but of the date of, that we get these that come to the council with the, that the date's already passed. Is there a way, besides that, some of these are recurring of several events at a ti, or not at time, but of not having, actually have a liquor license, per se? But I, that notwithstanding, because hopefully, whatever that may take discussion further down the road or whatever, but is there some way that we could alleviate or have the people, if, if that's the problem, that the people would turn in their requests, so the council would act upon it before the event took place? In case, in case there was, I'm not saying there would be, but in case there was some objection or something to it, obviously, now with this, the day, the day took place last week. So, I guess I was mostly wanting to talk about, but also, I think, in the future, and the, the number of requests that come from certain organizations. But that'd be all.
Yeah, I think the clerk could probably clarify a little bit more, but I believe she's been authorized to be able to approve these events if they occur before council. And the preference is to wait, hopefully, that, you know, council can review them and approve them. But she has that authorization should they come in within that, not that, you know, the time constriction problem. I don't know if you have anything additionally you want to add?
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. But the preference is to have them go to finance and council. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none? Please cast your balance on, or, here, please cast your vote on the balance of the report. Boy, it's time to go home. Motion carried seven A's, zero N's, regarding item eight, Mr. Delaney?
Okay, so I watched this one online, I don't know if anybody else did, but if you did, you didn't hear very much, because there's like this scratching noise that obscures everybody's voices for about the first ten minutes. And then, once they got to eight, you can hear most of what was going. I just wanted to kind of review that. I'm sorry that we have to rehash this again. I didn't make it to the meeting. Audio stinks online.
Mr. Kearns is available, and he can speak to it very well, I think.
Are you just requesting for a summary of the item?
Well, I read through the contract that Sue had sent, and I did read what on that item. I did hear Ma ask some questions about how this is going to affect our current employees that we have for doing inspections, and, and if that would affect them at all. It appeared that there was, there wasn't anything. If you could just go over this item just quick, so everybody in the community can hear.
Sure. So, we have, I'll, I'll try to, I'll try to back up at the start. So, we've got three individuals in the inspect, Inspection Division of Community Development. One is our contracted commercial electrical inspector. One is a full-time UDC residential inspector. And the other is a full-time UDC residential inspector, inspector, as well as a commercial plumbing inspector, H VAC, commercial H VAC, and commercial building inspector. Prior to that, prior to about twenty nineteen, we had a couple other individuals that assisted, Laura Lai and a couple others, that also held their credentials to do commercial projects. After their departure from the city, our commercial building inspector received his commercial credential and has since tried to take on the responsibility of performing commercial plan review. For a while, it was, it was working okay. There was a lull within the pandemic. We weren't issuing many commercial projects. We saw an influx in residential stuff. So, having two residential inspectors was great. Now, after the pandemic, we are seeing a spike in a commercial projects, which has made it hard for us to perform plan review, because typically, for commercial projects, we need to perform an inspection thirty, or forty-eight hours, forty-eight or seventy-two hours after we receive a request. So, a lot of times, those inspections take precedent with our commercial inspector and not necessarily the plan reviews. And for a project like the jail, which we fall, which falls on us to perform those inspections, we're out there multiple times a week for quite a, quite amount of time. And you couple that with, you know, the clinic that's just wrapping up and other commercial projects within the communities, not just new construction, but interior remodel, commercial alteration, commercial additions. It, it becomes a lot. And so, plan review has been difficult for our office. I've had to get involved and act as the communicator and relay information and try to take the project lead for many things. And it's been tough. I don't think we've been providing the community with a good level of service. E-Plan Exam, a third-party contractor, I think, can provide that good level of service. They can also take us to the next step. When I say take us to the next step, there's a threshold that we have to only perform plan review. plan review for a certain-sized building. So the jail had to go to the State of Wisconsin Department of Safety and Professional Services for plan review. That period up to about the last couple months has been a six-to-eight-week review period. Uh, now it's shrunk down to about three to four weeks, and I think part of that reason is because these other communities have gone with third-party contractors to perform their plan review to get these projects moving, to get contractors in the ground because we have a shorter building season when compared to other states across the country. So from an economic development standpoint, it's great, and I think it'll work very well because E-Plan Exam guarantees a fifteen-day turnaround for any project. It could be the size of the jail, could be the size of Caribou Coffee, it could be an interior alteration. They guarantee that fifteen-day turnaround, which hopefully will get contractors in the ground after the other approvals that we have. Um, in addition to that, with E-Plan Exam as our third-party, uh, plan reviewer, we can attain a full credential as a delegated agency because E-Plan Exam has an architect on staff, and that's the key that you need to receive a full delegation. Receiving a full delegation means that you can perform plan review to any size buildings. So now the jail that would have historic, or had, did go to, uh, the county jail project that did go to the state for review could have been done in-house with our third-party plan reviewer had they been, um, on retainer at the time. It's, that's key because those larger projects, um, often require very large plan review fees. Part of this contract, uh, involves a ten percent kickback of those plan review fees to the municipality. So the several thousand dollars that the, the jail, uh, plan review fee, uh, that was sent to the state that we didn't see anything, uh, for, but we have to perform the inspections on, um, would potentially fall onto now the third-party contractor, and we would, uh, have a ten percent kickback on those fees. It also relieves, as you noted earlier, a staff to focus more on inspections, but also code enforcement. Building code enforcement hasn't been a high priority because there hasn't been enough time. So we're talking about things like porches that are separating, chimneys that are falling apart, uh, life and safety issues on residential homes, um, you know, roofs that are blowing off. Um, I think that will free up some time to be a little more proactive with code enforcement as well. So this is, uh, to me and my review, I know, uh, Sue's been involved in reviewing the contract, our inspectors support it, Marshfield, uh, partnered with this company back in December as well, so other municipalities within the region are seeing the benefit. And ultimately, I think it, it, it will do good for our office and be good for the community.
The cost that the commercial, okay, say ShopCo, the ShopCo building or whatever, does that, um, is that in line with, like, what we would normally charge them? So this company is charging them is a certain, a certain fee. Is that in line? Is there any deterrence by them overcharging, uh, potential customer here?
So their, their fee schedule pretty much mirrors the state's fee schedule, so it's very comparable. Um, there are a few items that are a little bit more. I know their, their plumbing schedule is, is a little bit more based off of fixtures. Um, overall though, right, the, the benefit is that they're guaranteeing a fifteen-day turnaround. And in a time like this, in the building season, these contractors have already lined these projects up and it's, you know, it's pedal to the metal to get things moving. Um, in the example of the ShopCo redevelopment site, you've got a developer that's doing the, the building shell, so that required state review, and then all of the four tenants that are within the building, each tenant's space has to require state review. So Harbor Freight, they've gone to the state. They're now waiting, well, they did get their state approvals, but they had to wait the five weeks until the state got back to them. Marshalls, um, the others will have to go through the same process unless obviously we partner with them first, um, then they could turn things around quicker, but ultimately the fees are very comparable to the state.
Okay, and then as far as inspecting, excuse me, sorry. As far as inspecting, our inspectors will still inspect after the work is done. This company doesn't do any inspecting. They just approve the plans, correct?
Correct. So we will still, so we will, once we get an application, a lot of times it happens when they submit to the state, they submit to us as well. We hold the application until we get a letter from the state that says the project has been approved. We would probably continue with that, only this time it wouldn't be coming from the state, it would be coming from the third-party contractor, E-Plan Exam. We then charge a separate fee for the building permit locally, primarily for inspections. Previously, like if we did a smaller project like Caribou Coffee, our plan review fee was like less than three percent of our total building permit fee. Because most of the, right, most of the time is spent out in the field doing a footing and foundation inspection, site inspections, rough-in inspections for all of the trades, uh, final inspection, site plan inspection, final zoning inspection, a parking landscaping. And so that's where the bulk of the permit fee locally is charged. And so we were never really getting the proper kickback when we would do a plan review in-house for a smaller project to begin with. So in terms of our, the impact that this will have on our revenues, it's very minimal. And actually, I think now that we're roping in the state projects and getting ten percent of the larger fees, we will probably even see a little bit more revenue than we historically would have with plan review. If that makes sense.
Thank you. Uh, any other additional questions? If not, what are your wishes on the, we have a motion by Veneman, is that to approve the item as presented? Okay, and we have a second by Zachar. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried six A's with one N. Uh, we are on to item B, which is Public Works Committee meeting held May second. Um, Mr. Austin isn't here. Somebody else want to read the report? Actually, sorry, Mr. Rayo.
Yes.
You're the chairman. Apologize.
I was confused here.
No, no, you're, no. I'm confused.
The next, the second meeting, he ran, so, 'cause I was gone.
So floor is yours.
Thank you. Uh, the Public Works Committee met on Tuesday, uh, May second, two thousand twenty-three in the council chambers at City Hall and via remote video conferencing. Tom Rayo, Ryan Austin, Dennis Pollak were in attendance. Others attending are listed below. Item one was called the meeting order. The meeting was called order at five P. M. Item two, review engineering and street department monthly activity report. Reports were reviewed. Item three, review and consider approval of change order number one for the two thousand twenty-three concrete, contract for reconstruction projects. Motion was by Austin, seconded by Pollak to approve change order number one for the two thousand twenty-three contract, concrete contract for reconstruction projects as presented. That motion carried three zero. Item four, review and consider modifying the parking ordinance on the east side of Eight, Sixteenth Street South between, just south of Pepper Avenue to the East River View Expressway. The motion and a second to add a parking restriction on the east side of Sixteenth Street South between two thirty, two hundred and thirty feet south of Pepper Avenue and East River View Expressway. That motion carried three to zero. Item five, review of Wisconsin Rapids rail feasibility study. Since the last meeting, a Caribou Carbon Reduction Grant application was submitted for the, uh, predictive mobility alternative. Additionally, conversations were held with the DOT regarding the rail study and possible alternatives. Meetings with CN will be scheduled in May and a conference call will be scheduled with Patrick Engineering and Link Things for the June Public Works meeting. Item six, review of the referral list. The referral list was reviewed and updated. Item seven was set the next meeting date. The special meeting is scheduled for Thursday, May eleventh at five P. M. to review the bids for the sidewalk and curb and gutter maintenance contract. The next regular meeting is scheduled for June eighth at five P. M. Item eight was to adjourn. The motion is second to adjourn at five forty-six P. M. That motion carried three to zero. And with that, Your Honor, I'd move for adoption of the report.
Thank you, Mr. Rayo. We have a motion by Rayo, seconded by Pollak. Is there any further discussion or questions? All right, seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's, zero N's. We have the Public Works Committee meeting held on May eleventh. Mr. Rayo?
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works Committee met on Thursday, May eleventh, two thousand twenty-three in the council chambers at City Hall and via remote video conferencing. Uh, Tom Rayo was absent with Dean Veneman substituting. Ryan Austin and Dennis Pollak were in attendance. Other attendants are listed below. Uh, item one was called the meeting order. The meeting was called order at five P. M. Item two, review bids for the two thousand twenty-three curb and gutter and sidewalk maintenance contract and consider award to the low-qualified bidder. Three bids were received from Patrikas Construction being the low bidder in the amount of one hundred ninety-three thousand thirty-five dollars. There was a motion and second to award the contract to the apparent low-qualified, uh, contractor Patrikas Construction in the amount of one hundred ninety-three thousand thirty-five dollars and contractually reduce the contract amount by thirty thousand with the intent to carry over funds and transfer funds into the budget as presented. The motion carried three to zero. Item three was to adjourn. There was a motion and second to adjourn at five fifteen P. M. That motion carried three to zero. Uh, and with that, uh, Your Honor, I'd move for adoption of the report.
Thank you, Mr. Rayo. We have a motion by Rayo, seconded by Pollak. Is there any further discussion or questions? Uh, Mr. Rayo?
Yes. We made the motion. We had a second to get, I guess, on the floor, but I, just a question, I get, and it's on, we only had the one item with number two. Could anybody answer the, or, uh, I guess the thirty thousand dollar reduction? I approve of what's going on, but I guess I'd like to understand the thirty thousand dollar reduction. Tim or anything or anybody?
This is usually not my area of expertise, but, um, discussions with, uh, Joe Eckstead is that when in the contract, we're allowed to reduce the quantities up to fifteen percent. And so since the bids came in higher, you know, to, you know, it's kind of doing three different things. Obviously, one is reduce the, the quantities by fifteen percent, which translates to that thirty thousand. Uh, we have some carryover funds from last year that we didn't spend in sidewalks maintenance for tw, twenty-one thousand, and then, uh, thirty thousand will do an, an additional transfer from reserves, and you'll see that on a June, uh, budget amendment because I'm bringing, I'm bringing another one forth to adjust, uh, the budgets for the wage increase that was not included in the individual budgets last year, and then this will be part of that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's, zero N's. We are on to item D, which is Human Resource Committee meeting that was held on May ninth. Mr. Bemke?
Thank you, Mayor. Human Resource Committee met Tuesday, May ninth. All committee members were present. Um, a list of others in attendance is on file in the clerk's office. Um, item one, Chairman Bemke called the meeting to order at one P. M. Item two, discuss and consider for approval, the elimination of code enforcement officer position in the Community Development Department and the creation of an additional police officer position in the Police Department. The posi, the position will be a full-time assignment by the Police Chief of the Duties of Code Enforcement, Nuisance, Nuisance Abatement and General Neighborhood Services. There was a motion by Bemke to approve the elimination of the code enforcement officer position in the Community Development Department and creation of an additional police officer position in the Police Department. The position will be a full, full-time assigned by the Police Chief, um, duties of code enforcement, nuisance abatement and general, I, I read that, I think I read it, but. Motion died on the lack of, uh, motion died on the floor for lack of a second. Um, no other motions regarding the item are made. Item number three, the committee may go into closed, vote to go into closed session under section one nine eight five one E, Wisconsin Stats, which reads deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Um, there was a motion by Bemke, seconded by Catnaugh, to move to go into closed session. A roll call vote was taken. Motion carried three zero. Item four, in closed session, the committee discussed negotiations and strategy pertaining to the memorandum of understanding with the W R P P A Police Union regarding the entry-level officers who are not law enforcement board certified. The committee did not discuss the assignment by the Police Chief of Duties or of Code Enforcement, Nuisance, Abatement and General Neighborhood Services to an officer. Um, item five, there was a motion by Delaney, seconded by Bemke, to vote to go into open session. Motion carried three zero. Um, motion by Catnaugh, seconded by Bemke to approve a proposed memorandum of understanding between the city and W R P P A as presented with the M O U sunsetting on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Motion carried two to one. There was a motion by Delaney, seconded by Bemke, to approve the policy requiring reimbursement from entry-level police officers of recruit school costs consistent with the Fire Department payback schedule. Motion carried three zero. Um, item six, adjournment. Motion by Delaney, seconded by Bemke to adjourn. Motion carried three zero. Meeting adjourned at two fifty P. M. And with that, I will submit with approval, but I would like to hold out item number two.
Sounds good to your motion?
Yes.
Can you hit your motion button?
Can.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second? To approve the balance of the report, holding out item number two. Any questions or comments on the balance of the report? Seeing none? Oh, yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to comment on number four. This, we were hoping to get this wrapped up this month, um, and that's why, uh, well, the, the H R committee considered that memorandum of understanding, which was what with, which was basically the union's proposal with the changes that we want, want them to make. They have not agreed to this M O U. Um, we were hoping that at least if, if the council agreed to it, then we could say, you know, we, we agreed to it, and then it's just a matter of them agreeing, but I, I don't think they're going to, I, there's, we're still working on some of the, uh, language in that, so, um, uh, it's likely that that will come back, but it's okay that you approve it, at least as your, you know, a formal proposal to them again, and then, but it, it's not, not anything that they have signed off on yet. I just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Catnaugh?
Uh, with that, where does that leave us? Is this gonna be something that could be, if agreed upon, put on the committee of a whole meeting so that we can speed it up, or does it come back to H R or?
Um, it probably would come back to H R. I mean, I guess, uh...
So it has to come back to council either way.
Yeah, right. It would come back to council either way. That's true. Um, so even if it went to committee of the whole, it would come back. I, I, I don't think there are major issues. I'm, but I just know that as it is written, as it's in front of you right now, they are saying that they won't agree to that, so. I think if, if we need to, you know, if the chief needs, needs to get this done in the next, you know, before the next council meeting, we can always have a, you can always consider a special, uh, H R meeting, um, and I guess maybe a sooner council meeting, but, uh, I don't know. I mean, if it's, if it's approved in June, I'm not sure if that's an issue or not. That's why we, we kind of wanted to at least put it before so that you had a sign off on it, um, in time for May, but as I said, I, I just heard from them, and they're not in agreement with this, and they still want to talk about it, so.
As far as the timing goes, um, we're okay because it would not be till the fall academy. So we still have a couple months that we can work on it.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Uh, Mr. Rayo?
I think, I see where we're going, I guess, but I just wonder if, uh, it seems like we're not gonna have a, at least from what I'm getting or hearing, as I'm understanding it, is there, isn't going to be the resolution anyway, and that it'll still have to come back to us to approve what changes need to be made. So I guess I, I wonder why to approve this if we haven't heard back that they approve or whatever. Um, and from what I'm hearing is that that's not likely, um, so then I'd like to know where we're at of what, uh, what there is. You know, kind of a approving a car with four tires missing. Um, the engine's there, I guess, that can start, but I don't see how we're gonna get across the finish line, right now anyway. So I, I just, I, I think we should just, uh, wait until we hear back of, I guess... of, I guess, what their position is, what the difference is, and then see where we are with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Or at the next H.R. meeting, we might get the tires. Well, that's a good point. We do have a motion on the floor. In a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried six A's, one Nay. We're on to report number two. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, thank you. Item number two. Mr. Bemke?
So thank you, Mayor. I guess, I don't know if anybody's been paying attention to this or not. I believe the mayor actually proposed this, and I believe everybody had quite a bit of information into their packets regarding this. I guess my only thing is I'd just like to make a few comments. And then there is somebody, several people here that would probably like to speak to this. But in my opinion, the sworn officer in the Police Department might be more effective just because he is a sworn officer. I think you might be a little more inclined to go along with the action that needs to be taken if it is a police officer. Secondly, I believe that this position would be more flexible in the Police Department if they need an officer, you know, for something catastrophic or whatever, they have an extra guy. And by the same token, if they have some slow time, you can maybe assign some guys to give this guy a hand. So I guess those are just a couple of the things that I would like to see. It's a lot for one person that we have right now. And I just think the flexibility that this position would give us in the Police Department could be a real bonus. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Catnaugh?
Question for Attorney Schill. What are our city, whether it's a charter or ordinance, but what's the policy on when a motion dies in committee, doesn't even get a second, then coming to full council to be pulled out?
Well, this is why at the H.R. Committee meeting, I was trying to determine what you wanted to do when I got to council. Well, it's on the agenda as an item. And I guess if, I would say it's up to the body whether someone can, wants to make a motion specifically regarding this, even though there was not a, there wasn't any action that came out of committee. Or I know in the past that the councils have felt that if there's not, you know, there wasn't any motion made or any action taken at the committee, that then they didn't feel comfortable, you know, going ahead and taking action if there wasn't any action taken at the committee. You know, I'm telling you that it's okay to, it would be okay to take action because it was on the agenda as an item. There was notice of it, that it's possible that action could be taken even though, if you looked at the committee minutes, they did not take action. So I'm going to say you govern yourselves in that area. And if it's up to you whether you want to go ahead and take action without a committee recommendation or if you feel that it should go back to H.R. since they didn't take action.
Thank you. So I guess I'll speak my piece on this for those who didn't see the H.R. I mean, my understanding of this when it first came was that it was going to be a shifting of code enforcement from community development to the P.D. without an additional position. And then when we had the H.R. meeting, it was presented that there would be an officer in the Police Department that specifically would do code enforcement. I guess this goes back to my problem with code enforcement in general and having a position for it is someone driving around the city or responding to some complaints, but also just looking for code violations and doing that on a daily basis to find things to ding residents on. My hope was that the P.D. would just absorb this duty and that there would be no position for it. And that is why I didn't second it in the H.R. meeting. I'll be, if it's brought forward, voting against it today. And I, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Zachar?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just in regards to the motion being dropped at the committee level, I think when any, this is kind of why we're talking about having two council meetings, I think, because it's like gatekeeping. Like, I think everybody would want to talk about this. And I think I always pass stuff forward to make sure everybody has a chance to talk about it. So I think the council, anyways, that's my piece on that. I know this is a little tricky because, you know, as much as we love police officers, you know, when somebody does come up and start talking to you about issues with your property and this and that, and, you know, there's an intimidation factor when it's a police officer with, you know, tools on their belt that can be intimidating at times. I think it's good to do it. I think, you know, from my side, I don't think we can have a community without some kind of enforcement of some sort. Enforcement's strong, but somebody that's there and able to have the conversations. And my hope would be it would start as a conversation and it would go from there, you know, because I think most people are willing to have that talk, especially if they don't feel like it's being forced down their throat. Chief, I wouldn't mind getting your take on it if you would.
Just a point of order, I guess, it'd be. It came here with, I guess, no recommendation. But for us to really have any debate is that there would have to be a motion and a second of something to have debate and discussion. So my thing is that where we stand now is that there would be no discussion and that this would go back, if wanted, to the committee to try again to see what they could do. And that would be my point of order, that you need a motion and a second to do something to talk about doing something. Thank you.
Either are. So we do have a motion and a second. Yep. Mr. Zachar motioned. And Mr. Bemke seconded. So what's your motion, I guess?
I guess I would, I'm making the motion as the motion stands at the committee level.
There was no motion. Oh, that's correct. There was a motion that wasn't seconded.
Yeah.
But, so your motion is to?
So we're continuing the conversation from the original motion.
Which is to eliminate the code enforcement officer in the community development and create an additional police officer.
If that's what it takes for us to be able to discuss it? Yes, that's my motion.
Zachar has a motion. And then there's a second by Bemke. Is the motion is, as the item is presented on the?
On the committee report.
Yes. As agended. And that's your second, correct, Bemke? So the motion would be to eliminate the code enforcement officer position in the Community Development Department and create, and the creation of an additional police officer in the Police Department. The position would be a full-time assignment by the Police Chief of the duties of code enforcement, nuisance abatement, and general neighborhood services. Mr. Zachar, you still have the floor unless you're?
My point in saying this is if we need to do that or to have this discussion, now we can have the discussion. Thank you.
Do you have any discussion?
Oh, well, I did already. I discussed. But I would, if I, if I could, ask Chief Pataki to share his, or no longer Chief Pataki, sorry. But I would like to hear what you have to say about this, please.
Personally, I think it's a good idea. Like you said, when we show up, it's a different feeling than when a regular code enforcement officer shows up. We, this is not to go out and harass the public. The problem we have is we have certain residences that continually are in violation, and they, it's months and months and months into the process, and it doesn't seem like anything's getting done. Where if we have an officer do it, they come in, they give them their warning, their conversation, stuff like that, then we can start issuing citations and doing stuff. And I think it's just a better, a better fit for us because we will get, I think we would get more compliance based on the fact that we're law enforcement and people are more apt to listen to us. And they understand that we have, for less of a better term, more teeth. We tend to have a little more respect from them as far as, you know, if I don't do this, I'm going to get in trouble. So, and having one officer do it is a good thing because then they can keep track of everything that they're doing. They know where they are in the step process and as far as all that goes. If it does go to the municipal court judge to get orders as far as cleaning it up, law enforcement officers are familiar with the process, familiar with testifying in court and giving all that information to the judge. So in my opinion, I think it would be a good change. I think we would be able to clean up a lot more properties quicker because we would have a single person running that, and that would be their main focus from the Police Department standpoint.
In your opinion, is it possible with the right person doing this that they could build a stronger rapport with the properties that give more issues, more problems?
Definitely. I had conversations with the mayor in regards to doing like community or neighborhood cleanups or district cleanups and stuff like that. And that would be the stuff that we would have this officer do. They would set up like district, community, or block cleanup days where they would get dumpsters, stuff, and then have the people in the neighborhood clean up, help people that, you know, aren't able to, and build that rapport with them.
Is it also fair to say that this is more of an issue in certain neighborhoods than other neighborhoods?
For the most part, yes. There are generally areas that seem to have more of it, but it can pop up in any neighborhood at any time.
Great. Thank you.
And also just further, I had a conversation with Chief Hostins also prior to him coming up here just before the H.R. meeting. I wanted to get his opinion on something that was occurring in his soon-to-be department. And he also felt very strongly about that this should be handled in the Police Department. And so I just want to let you know that, that he echoes, still interim Chief Pataki. Thoughts?
One other comment also. The chief did say that he had basically the same position, but they were called community officers, and he actually set that program up. So if you just decide to go that route, he's already had that experience in doing that. So it'd probably be a fairly easy transition for him.
All right, we have a list of speakers. Mr. Rayom?
Thank you. I guess I, before we go further, I guess I'd like to hear, Kyle, would you have any input or what your feelings would be on this? With your department?
Yeah, you know, I've had some good conversations with the mayor. You know, I provided some comment at the H.R. meeting in regards to my opinion of it. And without just regurgitating that information, I mean, I generally don't support it. I think there's, the better way to approach code enforcement is through community development, through communication. I think in the H.R. Committee, I mentioned that, you know, there are situations where you're dealing with a hoarder and a punitive offense over and over and over again is not going to ensure compliance. Rather, working with, you know, Love Inc. or other agencies or churches is a better approach to it. There are also synergies within our office with the inspectors, working with the code enforcement officer to tag-team different things for building code violations and property maintenance violations that go hand in hand. There are also unique circumstances where public nuisances and public offenses with noise, lighting, you know, smoke from a fireplace, things of that nature, come up. And again, I think it's just, it's better fitting in community development. I will, though, echo that if it does go to P.D., I think it needs to be a full-time position. Wherever it ends up, it needs to be a full-time position. And, you know, I'm familiar with communities that have it both, or one way or the other, that have it in the P.D., it works. Others that have it in community development, it works. I would also echo Chief Pataki's statement in regards to doing other neighborhood programs and neighborhood improvements to try to be more proactive, right? To not solely be punitive, because I don't think a punitive approach will work solely. I think you do need to be proactive. You know, one of the ways our office has been proactive is creating a tri-fold brochure to identify frequently violated ordinances that we've shared with realtors, title companies, and landlords. I think if that's the approach taken, again, it could be effective in both departments. But again, I do not support the item for the reasons aforementioned. Thank you.
Me, I would like to echo, I guess, part of what Kyle said, I think, is that however we end up is that it should be a full-time position. You know, not, not put in somewhere and it's absolved into, you know, another, a position that's already there. We have to have a full-time position to do this, so. Thank you.
Yeah, and those, I don't know if anybody's really here that remembers who might, and Tom too. At one time, we've had four, up to four time, part-time, four part-time positions at one time trying to do this. And that was very unsuccessful just because there was such a disconnect. And I think that kind of highlights what Mr. Pataki says is that you need one dedicated person trying to manage it versus four fingers in the pot. And it was hard to figure. And it was ran through community development also at that point. And, so, yeah. Let's go to Mr. Pollak.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I totally agree that this position should go into the Police Department just for the reasons that were explained. We've, we've got a lot of problems that just doesn't really, I just think the action of the Police Department is going to get much better results than what we've had in the past. And I support this.
Mr. Delaney?
I had some thoughts on this that I had written down. I'll try to keep it short. There's many different forms of government. What type of government do you suppose is one where you can call the cops on someone for not bringing in their garbage can? Or call the cops for someone's grasp being too long? This is the kind of government all of us have sworn to uphold. There's a constitutional case to be made for limited government intervention in minor violations. In an effort to reduce my speaking time, I will list four key points expanding on the fourth. But if anybody wants me to expand on any of the other points, you just let me know, and I'll do so. Number one, preserving individual freedom. Number two, limited government powers. Number three, respecting property rights. Number four, fostering community engagement. This is one that I had spoken about at the meeting. Emphasizing community engagement and self-governance aligns with the principles advocated by Thomas Jefferson. By allowing our citizens to address minor violations through volunteer associations, neighborhood organizations, or community initiatives, individuals have the opportunity to take responsibility for their surroundings. This approach promotes a sense of civic pride, encourages cooperative problem-solving, and strengthens community bonds, all without government interference. In conclusion, the government In conclusion, government, the government's role should be restrained when it comes to minor violations that do not significantly impact public safety or health. Thomas Jefferson's commitment to individual freedom, limited government powers, and the protection of property rights serves as guiding principles for understanding why the government should not be overly concerned with issues such as uncollected garbage cans, overgrown lawns, or the presence of junk in yards. By prioritizing limited government and respecting individual liberties, we uphold the Constitution while fostering self-governance and community engagement. A vote to approve an officer for the specific task of code control, which I cannot comprehend this being a full-time job, is giving power to the nosy neighbors. Let's stop giving additional power to the nosy neighbors that live such insignificant lives that they have to stick their noses in everyone else's business.
Thank you. Mr. Bemke.
So just a comment, a quick comment, and I think we've got some people that I'd like to recognize to speak. I don't think anybody's overly concerned about the long grass or the garbage cans. It's, it's the big, it's the big messes that we're concerned about. And again, it's, it's a lot to ask of one person, but it's the time that it takes to get these cleaned up, and there are some big messes if you take a ride around town. I think that's where the police department would be more effective than a code enforcement officer. I, I'm not concerned if the grass is being cut, or if their garbage can lid is being closed. So I guess that's, that's why I'm supporting this. And I think Bruce King would like to speak on the topic, if I could recognize him.
Thank you. Bruce, please come up to the microphone and make sure it's on, if you want to state your name and address.
Thank you. I'm Bruce King. My address is 1111 20th Place. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. It was brought to my attention that our ordinance officer is going to retire sometime in June. I also understood that the mayor had made a proposal to replace the ordinance officer with a sworn police officer who is designated for ordinances. We have had in the past where people have not taken the ordinance officer seriously, and repeatedly, on a daily basis, people have violated city ordinances year after year after year. I'd like to give you an example. There's a homeowner on 16th Street South that has been in violation for over eight years. In that eight-year period, he received 10 warnings and five actual citations. The last citation issued was three years ago on May 29th, 2020. I passed some pictures around. The first photo is, on the top, is a brown house, which was my mother's home. She has since deceased. When she looked out her front window, this is what she saw. The neighbor directly across the street did try to put up a lattice fence to hide some of the rubbish and garbage from her 16th Street neighbor. I have personally witnessed vehicles all over the entire yard. One month, I reserved, I observed him removing an engine from his truck in his backyard. I do not know where the oil, antifreeze, battery, acid, steering, and brake fluid ended up. I also observed individuals driving their driveway around the back of their house and come out on the other side, which was lawn, and exit over the curb. Keep in mind that this property is only 75 feet wide, and numerous times, he drove on this elderly woman's lawn. Twice both, the next-door neighbor and I, have observed gasoline leaking from their automobiles. At one point in time, the neighbor called the police. We're not sure what action was taken. We've allowed this individual to break the law for every years, for over eight years. Once he is notified, he'll clean up partially, with a week, within a week, it's back to the junkyard. The City of Wisconsin Rapids has an obligation to enforce the ordinances. I believe the council, who writes these ordinances, must supply personnel and financial resources to make this happen. There are dozens of residential properties in our community that are just as unsightly and as the one I've just given you. I believe that any law-abiding, taxpaying citizen in our city who takes the time and effort to keep their property up, their property is clearly devalued when potential chemicals are seeping into the ground in their neighborhood by property owners and landlords who choose to ignore the importance of, of following these ordinances. I'd also like to speak, not only as a resident, but I'd like to point out, as president of the Police and Fire Commission, that I don't believe that current officers, I don't believe that the current officers with the staffing levels can take on these extra responsibilities on a, on a regular basis. For those of you that have probably not been aware of it, I was back in 1974. I graduated from high school and became, I joined the auxiliary police. And back then, they had two patrol officers on the west side, two patrol officers on the east side, and one floater, which was usually the shift commander. So it was basically five individuals patrolling our city at the time. Forty-nine years later, we have two patrol officers on the east side, two patrol officers on the west side, and one officer floating in the middle. Now, sometimes there's extra staffing going on, but I checked with then-Chief Pataki, and he said it's the same. I don't understand how 49 years can go by, and we don't have extra police officers. So I think by, forcing the police officers to take on additional ordinance violations would not do the department any good. I know there's other people who'd like to speak, so I would just like to say, in closing, what you permit, you promote. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, did you want to have the other people speak, or do you want to?
Yes, I would like to recognize, are both looking to speak? I would like to recognize Dale.
Dale Stevens, 340 19th Street South. Thank you for having me up here tonight. My problem is with a neighbor that is a, it's a rental, and they just don't, the owner of the property does not care what goes on there. So out of the last, I don't know, dozen people that have lived in there, it just gets worse and worse and worse all the time. Now, the, the third-ago renter was a mechanic that worked out of his garage in that rental, in that rental for years, changing out engines and axles and transmissions, and you name it. He did everything out of there. And I had Ray stop in and talk to him a number of times. And one of those times, my other neighbor, when I wasn't at home, witnessed Ray being pushed around by this guy. I know that he didn't, he didn't stand for it, and he, what he did about it, I don't honestly know. But he was over there quite often, along with other police officers for many other disorderly things. So you never know, your person responding to this stuff could be confronted by somebody that's not in their right mind. And I think it's dangerous for anybody to be having to conduct business with these people when you just don't know what they're going to do. My property is greatly devalued, having this thing next door to me. And I don't see anything getting any better, the way things are going. And I would really like you guys to act on this and put in a full-time position for a police officer to uphold this. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee, did you want to speak at all? Does anybody want to recognize Lee? Okay, thank you.
Lee Albrecht, 443 Mead Circle. I'm sure a few of you know that, I think 10, 12 years ago, I was also in your position in the city council for six years. We tried to deal with this then, when there was a part-time person that tried to enforce the ordinances. As soon as the previous mayor got elected, that was Mr. Vruwink, I believe, a full-time ordinance officer got elected, got elected. And I have nothing against that person. I have nothing against him at all. However, things didn't, things, some things got better, some things didn't get better at all. And you got to have some type of ordinance control. You just can't be helter-skelter, let anybody do what they want to do, when they do it, how they do it. Like Mr. King said, if you're not enforcing it, you're promoting it. You're letting people do it. I don't care what you do as far as how you want to structure your ordinance officer. If you want to have the code enforcement people do it, great. If you want to have the ordinance officer by himself do it, great. If you want to hire a police officer, an additional police officer, great. I'm also on the Police and Fire Commission. If you want to see the reports that Mike brings to us every month, he'll say, well, we only got so much we can do with what we have. And to ask the current officers to do that, you guys got to be not thinking properly. They don't have time to do that. They have enough issues with public safety. Speeders, stop sign people, people doing things that they shouldn't be doing without having to enforce ordinance. And yes, Mr. Delaney, I agree with you. You shouldn't have to send a police officer over to tell you to mow your grass. However, if I would tell my neighbor to mow my grass, because it's getting to be a foot and a half tall, and I just, this is just an example, somebody in Texas was shooting an AR-15 off at midnight. The neighbor's asked him to go, to quit shooting it. He went over and killed them all. So I don't think neighborhood people can do that. It needs someone that has more authority and more something to do with the city, the government. Yeah, and I want government out of my life, too. But you also have to have rules. You also have to have laws, and you need to enforce them. If you're not going to enforce the ordinance of this town, get rid of everyone you have. Because then everybody can do whatever they want to do. But if you want to have a town, a community, that people want to come and live in, you need to enforce your laws and ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? How we doing on power? Everybody good? Some tablets are starting to die, so if you, if you're getting low, let us know. All right, so there's, so there's no, you see additional comments or questions? We have a motion and a second. Seeing nothing else, please cast your ballots. Are you thinking, Tom? Okay. That motion carried four As and three Nays. Okay, we are on to the second HR report from tonight. I didn't put in there, Mr. Bemke, that the increase was 5%. Just so everybody knows.
We'll get that in here someplace. Well, you just did. The increase was 5%. Thank you, Mayor. Human Resource Committee met Tuesday, May 16th, at 5:30 PM in the council chambers. Meeting was called to order at 5:35. Item number two was to discuss and consider for approval the renewal of employee health insurance with Aspiris Health Plan effective July 1st, 2023. There was a motion by Bemke, seconded by Catnaugh, to approve. Motion passed 3-0. Item number three was to discuss and consider for approval the renewal of the Dental Plan Administration with Delta Dental effective July 1st, 2023. Motion by Catnaugh, seconded by Bemke, to approve 3-0. Item number four, discuss and consider for approval the employee health and dental insurance rates effective July 1st, 2023, which the mayor just mentioned, are going up 5%. There was a motion by Delaney, seconded by Bemke, to approve. Three, it carried 3-0. Item number five was adjournment. There was a motion by Bemke, seconded by Delaney, at 5:44 PM. The HR committee adjourned, and with that, I'll submit for approval, and that is a motion.
Thank you. We have a motion by Bemke, seconded by Veneman. Is there any further questions or discussions? All right, seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven As, zero Nays. We have a legislative committee meeting held on May 1st. Mr. Bemke?
We'll get there.
Also, if you can save the HR report, I'll pass on to Mr. Hartman, so you can make it official and get it to the clerk for her minutes.
Very good. All right, thank you again, Mayor. Legislative Committee was held Monday, May 1st. All members were present. A list of others in attendance is in the clerk's office. Item number one, meeting was called to order at 5:19 PM. Item number two, consider a council rule which will require all supporting materials for items brought before the council be provided to older persons at least two business days before the council meeting. Motion by Zachar, seconded by Bemke, to adopt a council rule which will require all supporting materials for items brought before the council to be provided to older persons at least two business days before the council meeting, or else the item will not be considered at that meeting. Council has the ability to suspend the rule by a simple majority vote, and then consider, consider the late supporting materials and consider the agenda item. Motion carried 3-0. Item number three, consider eliminating standing committees and have two council meetings per month. No action was taken. Committee directed staff to identify what needs to be considered in order to make this change. That recommendation will be considered at a future committee of the whole meeting. Item number four, consider limiting older persons to serving three or four consecutive terms. The committee took no action on this idol and removed the referral. Item number five, discuss temporary alcohol licenses and their requirements under state law as it relates to recent requests for temporary alcohol licenses. The committee received advice from city attorney and city clerk regarding the approval of temporary alcohol licenses. Nor, no formal action was taken on them, on the item. Next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, June 1st, at 4:00 PM. There was a motion by Reom, seconded by Zachar, to adjourn. Motion carried 3-0, and the meeting adjourned at 7:25 PM.
Thank you. Is there, Mr., we have a motion by Zachar to approve, and do we have a second? And we have a second by Mr. Veneman. Mr. Delaney?
Okay, so on number three, that's just going to be held over for the committee of the whole in June. Is that correct? Yeah, okay. Thank you.
The 19th? We're looking at the 19th? 19th, everybody? Okay. So we have a motion and a second? What's that? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven As, one Nay. We are on to reports of other committee. Did I, what did I say? Oh, seven, oh, I saw the one on the screen that did not vote. So, yeah, seven As, zero Nays. Thank you. Item 13 is reports of other committees, commission boards, and department reports.
Should I just hold up the Perks and Rec?
Or you can talk about it.
Talk about it. Yeah, I just wanted to point out. Thanks. Thanks, Your Honor. Yeah, we had a discussion on the skate park incident at Perks and Rec, and there was, and we're looking to develop a app so that the police can keep an eye on it. Can you talk a little bit more about that, Mike?
Yeah, we, we had an incident where we had an adult bring some juveniles to the skate park to ensue a fight between juveniles. So what we want to do is, we, we'd like to get an app to put on squad computers so that we are able to monitor the skate park. It would also be in our shift commander office. That way, if we see kids congregating there and, and a problem starting, we'd like to get there before it explodes. This, I mean, the video of, of this lady bringing those two juveniles, it was a 10-minute lead-up to the actual fight. So if we would have had cameras, we would have seen this going on, and we could have intervened before the fight took place, and actually, one of the kids was sprayed with pepper spray. So it really got out of hand. So, and we do not want to close the skate park for the kids that are there for the right reason, and adults, if they're there to skate and they're doing the right thing. We don't want to close the park down because some other kids are doing something that they should not be doing. Just so you do know, we will shut it down. If there's a safety concern for anyone involved at the skate park, we will shut it down, like this pepper spray incident. We will shut it down till we get the people in custody or make contact with them, so that we make sure that the other kids that are in the area are not in any danger. But we want to keep that to an absolute minimum. We don't like to close the skate park. So the camera system would greatly help us to monitor what's going on there and to intervene before it explodes.
Thanks, and
Thanks. And one of the other things we talked about is just quite a bit of loitering, and so it just, Jake, just letting the public know, Jake Klingfork's working on some different rules and such for the skate park, and one of them being, there just doesn't seem like there's anybody, reason for anybody to be there if they don't have a skateboard or a bike. And so we're working on some of that, and I think that the next Parks and Rec meeting, we're going to have some ideas on that. So I just wanted to make sure the public was aware of what was going on in that. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. And I, I don't know, I just want to reiterate, Craig, the superintendent, Craig Bjorn, from schools, spoke at, pretty passionately at the Park Direct meeting, and I want to reiterate that it was absolutely ludicrous that an adult parent took two children to the skate park with the intent to fight and cause a problem. And there's something wrong, and it's pretty, pretty upsetting and disgusting. And if that's, parents should be ashamed of themselves of this situation. Mr. Katnaugh?
Thank you. I just want to, I'm glad you pulled this out, Dean, and gave us an update. It does fall under the Parks and Rec Commission. I'm glad that this was handled the way it was with the press release and the action taken to move forward and get the skate park in a better place, because as we know and hear, it's been an issue for a long time, and I think the cameras and the squads will be of great value to officers, especially trying to respond to the scene. For those who don't know, they're currently, the feed from the cameras comes here at City Hall, so if an officer shows up, they would have to come get that footage. In this particular incident, I think it was handled well. I'm glad the public was notified of the incident and what charges were brought via the press release, and it's good to know and let the public know that we're on a much better path to making the skate park a safer place. So thank you to all who helped with that.
Thank you. So, Mr. Delaney, your motion is to?
Please not file.
Thank you, sir. And do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Katnaugh. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Thank you. That motion carried seven As, zero Nays. Any referrals for committees? Go ahead with your question.
I just wanted to touch on the email that you had sent about needing more equipment, and if anybody wanted to talk about it. I think everybody's for it, but if anybody had any concerns or anything, I'm fine with whatever.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and if, I did send you an email. If you have a chance to look at it, just let me know. It's regarding replacing a compressor on a chiller, but check out your email. I also attached the estimate for it. Item 15. Oh, I'm sorry, Tom, I did see your, your yellow.
Yeah, here we are. Now you can hear me, I hope. An item we just took action on, on HR and about adding a police officer, do we have to do anything council-wise as far as pay grade or anything? Is that all there, or is, I mean, is there anything related to that that we would have to?
It should be all by union contract.
Right, well, there are some things that we'll probably need to bargain on that position in terms of making it an assign, that there'll be an assignment of duties and what the, yeah, pay is.
I guess, and to follow up with, I guess, if we're going to not have an office, a code enforcement officer next month at some point in time, and no notice has been put out about hiring an officer, I don't believe, or is there?
Bless you. So what the thought is, and Mr. Pataki there has kind of expressed or put out information to see if, my concern was that nobody would be interested in the position internally, that assignment. So what he did is, he kind of put out a request to see if there was any interest internally, excuse me, internally, and so there is. So an existing officer would be interested in that, doing that assignment. So the replacement would come on the bottom side with a new, a new recruit.
So if an officer that we presently have would take this position, and with the position opening in June, who would then feel an empty, fill an empty police position? Because my understanding is, is that this would be a full-time police officer, ordinance control officer. So how do we, somehow, we're adding a person, I guess, where that person goes, when could we expect that to happen, but how are we going to cover this for possibly a number of months? If we, and if we put a police officer on code enforcement, those duties, not on the department, add a police, that a police officer goes to that, I guess, to reiterate, who becomes, who's going to be the police officer?
So I think either way, we're stuck in a position, because if you chose not to fill it and leave it in code enforcement, we would have no code enforcement officer for several months also, so.
And I get, you know, and I guess I see, I see part of that, but I guess it might be, maybe not, but easier maybe to hire a code enforcement person per se, but again, then here, we're being, I guess, one, at one way or the other, we're left without somebody. And I guess as it, as it stands, come whatever date that is in June, we're going to have to make a decision, or somebody's going to have to make a decision, is that police officer going to take on the duties of code enforcement? And then we're not going to have a police officer. So at some point in time, I understand it's going to take time to hire somebody, but how are we going to fill two positions with one person? We have to do that. Not laying blame anywhere on anybody, but somewhere, I get, I am having a feeling that this hasn't all been totally thought through ahead of time. There was a, maybe a gut reaction, maybe of what to do to enforce that, and I know we're on the thing to add about referrals and that, but, and I don't have one for this because I didn't know what was going to happen tonight, so there's nothing to do. But somehow, we have to, in the meantime, address the situation. Are we going to, and we have not, as the discussion went, what a number of police officers that we have compared to 49 years ago, trying to keep up with what has changed in the community since then. People may say, number of people haven't changed, but what is taking place in the community sure has changed. Now, how are we going to fill it? We can't brush it off and say it's not going to be filled for a few months. Somehow, it's going to be filled internally, that somebody there from the police department's going to do it, and that's what they're going to start doing in the middle of June. We're short a police officer, a patrol officer. So how do we rectify this hole that we're in? Or am I making this hole a lot bigger than what it is? Because somebody, somehow, there's two, two jobs. Come whatever date that is in June, I don't know what the date is, one person's going to be doing two, so I guess maybe we're going to have, Mike, what are your officers working, 12 hours now? I guess we can give them another eight on, make them 20, they'll get four hours off. You know, it's, you know, I, I just hate to keep going, but I, it's, we, we made a decision to do something, but we didn't address the decision of how to do what we made a decision to do. You know, and I, I'm not, I, I'm, I'm going to shut up because I don't have the answer. I think the decision that was made here by the council, the council should be probably debating that of what to do. Not, maybe not debating may not be the right word, but a discussion on what feelings are that people have, how we, how we do this. You know, if we don't get a new person, and I, whatever job they go to or whatever, if we don't get one for six months, who's going to do that work? Or are we saying we don't need that work to be done? I'm saying we do. But I guess I'll leave it up to the rest of the council, and I, I hope you understand, I guess, where, where I'm coming from, of how to resolve, and how to resolve this. Maybe I'm all wet, but here, that's it.
So we're, we're not talking about agenda item here, but to answer your question, Tom, we spent the last year without a police chief, and we didn't hire any additional bodies to fill that, backfill that. So I commend Mike Pataki for stepping up for this past year and jumping into a seat I don't think he ever had any plans on jumping into, and they figured it out. One year, over, it's been over a year now. There's been no additional bodies put in. He, along with the interim deputy chiefs, got to it, figured out, got it done, did an exceptional job, and if you look at their overtime and look at what has gone in that department, they held the line. And the police department didn't fail, missing a police chief there. And I do thank you for that. But they figured it out, Tom. And we'll figure this out, too. Jay?
Thanks.
Yeah, we really don't have an agenda item.
Okay. Very good.
Been approved by, it's been approved by council.
All right. Then I'll just like to say thanks to Mike and Scott and the whole department, too, for keeping the wheels on the bus for the last 14-plus months, so thank you.
Okay, we're on to item 15, and we do have a closed session to get to yet. In open session, the council may vote to go into closed session under Section 19.85, Parent 1, Parent E of the Wisconsin statute, which reads, liberating and negotiating the purchasing of a public, purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds, and conducting other specified public business whenever competitive and bargaining reasons require a closed session. And Section 19.85, Parent 1, Parent G, Wisconsin statutes, which reads, conferring with the legal counsel for the respect of, oops, conferring governmental body who are rendering oral and written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. In closed session, the council will discuss negotiations, litigation, excuse me, litigation strategy in preparation for upcoming mediation session regarding litigation involving a new wastewater services agreement with the Village of Bearn. And finally, the council will adjourn in closed session. Somebody willing to make a motion to go into close? So we have a motion by Zachar, seconded by Katnaugh. I guess, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven As, zero Nays. We will take two minutes. If you need...